To at least one clock in my room. I think I'm the only board member on. Chris just texted and said he was going to be a couple of minutes late. I think.
Can you?
We'll. Open the meeting at 1:38. Um, and we are recording, right Dar? Yes, I see a little red dot going like this. So thanks, everybody, for, um, for coming on this sort of short notice, but it's a pretty important meeting. Introductions. So Dan Rosemark and Dan Casa Grande. Are the, are two attorneys that have been with us throughout this. Do you, Dan or Dan, do you want to introduce? Keith and David?
Sure.
That would be great.
And can you hear, and can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, so, uh, I don't have the benefit of being able to dial into the zone. I'm in the car. I'm in the passenger side, so I'm not driving. It's good. So yesterday there was a few filings and, and what, uh, what we wanted to do is have this discussion on Tuesday with the board. But we're here today and Keith Ainsworth is an attorney. He represents the. PDA, which is the Plan Development Alliance of Northwest Connecticut, Inc. And they're, they were a intervenor and party to the filing. Before the, the Siting Council, which is docket 488. And David Maxon is the consultant that the PDA had retained. David is with Isotrop Wireless. And Isotrop Wireless and David had performed a series of analysis on the. On the coverage that was being proposed by the applicants through AT&amp;T. They were, they were, uh, David went through and compared the coverage at a various height levels. And also compared that to what a small cell distributed antenna system would look like. In lieu of the proposed heights that were being proposed by AT&amp;T and the applicants. At approximately 154 feet above ground level where, where their antennas would, would, uh, end. I'd like to hand it over to Keith if, if that's okay, Keith, that you can, uh, anything to add to that? Or then we can get started with what David was going to present.
Good afternoon, everyone. Yeah, there's not much more to add in terms of the status of things. We are, you've got all our pre filings in and we actually have a sense of exactly where AT&amp;T stands. I think what's interesting now, having this, having this meeting actually delayed till Friday gives us the advantage. Seeing the best of everyone's case so far. And I've had a chance to look at AT&amp;T's filings this morning. The arguments that they're making are exactly what we would have expected them to make. We in fact anticipated them. And we even have additional rebuttal to them, part of which we'll probably be talking about today. But, uh, you know, really this is going to be more Dave Maxon's presentation because he's the one who did the technical analysis that we commissioned. I've also represent two other intervenors. The South Spectacle Lake Residence, a group of residents on South Spectacle Lake who intervened yesterday. And the Spectacle Ridge Association, which intervened yesterday. There's no material difference. Positions being taken, but there are some subtle differences between them. But anyway, I can turn this back over to, to David to, to walk you through, uh, really the, the. Technical aspect of what we're presenting as an alternative to AT&amp;T's proposal, which I think. Having done probably about 40 of these, this is probably one of the, the most. Technically sound and robust alternatives that we've ever put together. Partly because of the, the fact that the hills in Kent. Provide such deep valleys that with the change in height, you actually don't see all that much change in coverage. And so the, the towers could be a lot shorter and it also lends itself to a small cell deployment where sometimes it doesn't otherwise. But that's as far as I'll go at the moment and let David introduce his materials.
Finding my mute button. Uh, you can hear me okay? Great, thank you. Yeah, where to start? I guess perhaps with some terminology. We hear a lot of talk these days about small cells and the FCC in the last year or so passed some rulings to. Protect and enable the deployment of basically small trash can sized antennas on utility poles in the public way. With a minimum of restrictions. So what wireless companies are doing is installing these in places. And it is true what AT&amp;T says that. They are often used in areas where there might already be adequate or marginal coverage. But where there's a, a density of users like at a shopping center or at a major intersection. Soccer fields, that sort of thing, where they can increase the capacity of the network to a small area with concentrated users. So that's one common application of the small cells. The other application is basically to cover a corridor. North Andover, Massachusetts, Verizon Wireless put in some 24, actually I think it was, that was just one. Application, uh, 24 small cells on some major streets into toward the center of town. Some of those locations didn't have very good coverage, but all other locations did. So partly a capacity. Project and a coverage project. And the other thing about small cells is. A decade ago, when we were all talking about distributed antenna systems. The, we were working with 3G wireless technology, which was fairly inefficient, fairly dumb, even though it was digital. And with, with the technology a decade ago, you had to have a base station. For a distributed antenna system, the way you had a base station for a cell tower. So, uh, you'd have a, a building or a compound somewhere with some bunch of sheds or some equipment in them. And then you'd run, custom run dedicated fiber to down all the utility poles to all the locations where you put. These antennas on the utility poles. Uh, and that was a distributed antenna system. And that, it's costly because you have to run dedicated fiber and you have to build a base station hotel somewhere near where your, your network is. With the 4G technology, things have gotten really much simpler and these new small cells. Can be put on utility poles and just plugged into commercial data service. So the same data service that your business might order from a service provider. These companies can order data service to the utility pole. And plug that straight into their, uh, their small cell. And they don't need to have a base station hotel two miles away connected by dedicated fiber. So it's a much flatter, simpler, less expensive. Way to go. So the technology has come a long way from what everyone used to call DAS, distributed antennas. So with that, um, yeah, I think, you know, Keith kind of covered the, the basics that. What we have here is a tower proposal that's necessarily tall for its location. And, uh, as I said in my report, it's. It's, it's just plopped down in the middle of Route 341 because it's the high ground. Wireless companies generally design their networks to expand out from where they have coverage. To areas where they don't have coverage. So that they can have those handoffs that I'm sure you've heard about that. Everybody wants when they're in the car and they're moving from the influence of one cell to the next cell on the highway. That the call doesn't get dropped, that it gets smoothly handed off to the next cell site. And the same thing is true, not just for calls, but for what are called sessions on, in internet language where. You're, you're, you're connected with a particular service or with a particular website and you're. Some transactions going on. When you, when a phone call drops, uh, the same thing happens on, on a internet connection that's transactional. The session can drop and you might have to completely reinitiate your, your connection to the, whatever it is that you're connected to at the other end. So it. It's a situation here where, as I think I can show you, can I hit a share screen here and show you some maps? Is that perhaps the next thing to do?
That would be great.
All right. Share, hit this button. Okay, I'm screen sharing. And what I have right now are. Two coverage layers turned on. Let me turn off one of them. All right, so we use the same kind of modeling tools that the AT&amp;T consultants, C squared systems, use to. Predict and model coverage, you know, in terrain. And I'm just picking the, the. One, one signal level that they were using, which is the, the signal level that provides the most. Service. And I have a couple of blue dots where they have reported that they have cell sites and we've populated that with simulated. Signals and, and the orange areas are where these signals go. And this is pretty consistent with the materials submitted by C squared systems, the AT&amp;T consultant. And so we can see that there's obviously has, you know, some attempt to have coverage on Route 7 over the years, but. They haven't completed that and. Then along comes a proposal to put a tower at Bald Hill. And. It'll be a moment. There we go. It's rendering. Uh, and we can see here that there is this, this. Splotch of coverage that leaves a gap on 341, a big one. Before you get over the ridge and down into where the coverage from Route 7 is. So. What's happening with this process is that. High ground is taken because it's believed to be the best way to, to provide coverage. But a large gap is being left and then what that implies is that sometime in the future. Another wireless company or a tower company or somebody's going to come in and say, we need to put a tower here. And, and this is, this location, it's kind of in the middle of this gap that they're creating. Is at the foot of, uh, Cobble Road and that the valley here that Cobble is in. Which is one of the scenic designated roads in town. So by agreeing to this tower, there's a. An implication that by default, at sometime in the future, somebody's going to try to put a tower. Over here and make things even worse visually. And so our approach to addressing that. And, uh, yes, these approaches are not. Liked by the carriers. They don't like to be told that they can't use a tower. They like to decide on their own when to use a. Small cell network. Sorry, double click there. We, we came up with two, let me just zoom in a little bit here. To seven locations where we, we. Simulated antennas on utility poles. And, uh, what we're able to do because of that is that we can move antennas off. 341 and put them into areas that are otherwise perhaps shadowed even from Bald Hill. You know, we could have put another one over here on the Richards Road, get more coverage down for these residences. We might have put two up here on the rest of Route 341 to get us completely to the town line. But just for illustration, with seven nodes like this, we, we can get coverage that pretty much gets us to Route 7. This is a relatively small gap here. I don't think it's technically going to be a problem because. There's probably going to be signal in there, just not at the, the full level that's desired. And, you know, their Cobble also connects. Out and down. And in the process of doing it this way, with these seven nodes, we achieved. Slightly more coverage in terms of the, the orange brown color. For our network than Bald Hill achieves with its, uh, its centralized coverage approach. And where Bald Hill covers less than two miles of. Route 341. This approach would cover almost four miles, almost the entirety of the, of the road. So there are reasons for doing it this way in terms of efficiency. And in terms of getting the coverage where it's needed to through roads and to residential areas. We did, we physically counted the residences that fall within. The brown footprint and the orange footprint of Bald Hill. And, um, we have, uh, I think it was 148 for the Bald Hill and 178 for the, this model. And one of the reasons for that is, it turns out because the way the, the lay of the land is. If you use a utility pole on the high ground, looking down into the. The valley that Cobble Road travels down. This coverage can get into some pretty densely developed neighborhoods to the northern end and get all the residences on Cobble. Which Bald Hill completely misses. So this design approach is something that honors the, the skyline of the town and it. Can achieve better coverage and more adaptable coverage over time. Than putting in a cell tower at Bald Hill and a cell tower in between sometime in the next five or 10 years. And.
David, David, Dave, David, this is Dan. Can you just also give a little bit of an explanation of the frequency that they're proposing to use in the, in the 700 megahertz? And kind of identify how that frequency is apart from some of the other frequencies that they may have been used in the past? If that's helpful?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. Thanks for, for bringing that up. Yes, one of the other differences between distributed antenna systems of a decade ago and using small cells today is that in the meantime. The FCC has licensed carriers to use lower frequencies. And 600 and 700 megahertz bands, which do a lot better penetrating foliage than the frequencies up in like the PCS bands. Which are in the 2 gigahertz range or 2,000 megahertz range. So one of the things that, uh, is often said about distributed antenna systems is that the signals get. Blocked by the trees because utility poles are generally not taller than the mature trees that might be next to them. And that's, that's true. That's likely with the PCS frequencies, with those higher 2 gigahertz frequencies. And so what happens in that case is that the, the signals from a DAS light up the road because the road is cleared of trees. And then as they try to go off the road, they, they get absorbed by the vegetation pretty quickly. Where we've used this computer model conservatively to try to replicate what happens when the 700 megahertz signal. Is launched through trees, might get out into the open because it's on high ground and then get to its destination. And so we, we're, we're comfortable with, with the model that we have here. I was actually quite surprised to see how far the line of sight was up, up the Cobble Road Valley. But because it's at that's the 700 megahertz frequencies. It can, it can go places that, uh, a decade ago with, with DAS, with the high frequencies only could not go.
There's an important aspect to that, um, that everyone should be aware. One of the things that AT&amp;T is saying is they've asked this council to take notice of the docket in Branford, which was a. 2012, 2008 decision. Actually 2008 decision. And, uh, at that time, they rejected DAS partly because of the lack of penetration that it would get. And clearly the technology's changed in the last dozen years. And so, um, AT&amp;T is actually playing an interesting game. They're trying to pull out an old decision to try to influence the new council because some, a lot of the members have changed since the time of that decision. And they want to try to say, hey, look, the, the previous council already did this. You shouldn't be inconsistent. But it would not be inconsistent in the least, um, given the, the changes in the technologies. In addition, what was also interesting to see in AT&amp;T's filing was in order to. Overstate or inflate the coverage that their proposed towers will get, they used a minus 108 dB. Standard for, you know, signal strength, which is a fairly low signal strength compared to what they were. Using for, um, to try to knock down our small cell. They were using 93. And, and so what they did is they said, you know, we're going to measure our own system at a, at a much lower signal strength. And we're going to measure yours at a. Excuse me, our own at a, yeah, much more lower signal strength and we'll measure yours only at a more robust, which then shrinks our footprint. And I think, you know, that's easily something we can point out at the, at the hearing. So, so far, the arguments that they've put up, we had already anticipated and. I expect that we'll be doing some friendly cross-examination among the intervenors to. Highlight that.
And while I have this up, I might as well just pop up the. Model that we have for Richard's Road, alternate B site. And in a perfect world, if you could have put a tower anywhere. There is some benefit to the Richard Road location because it reaches a piece of Route 341, not quite as much as Bald Hill does. But it also throws a lot of signal down into the southeast corner of town. Just because of the way the lie of the terrain. But the difficulty, of course, with that is it does that because it's on top of a scenic ridge. And since the applicant has specifically stated their objective is Route 341. We think that's another issue with, with the Richard Road proposal. So we're focusing most of our comparisons with, with the alternate A, the Bald Hill.
So. So we called this meeting, you know, for the benefit of, of the town. I mean, I think if you have any questions regarding where things stand. You know, this would be a wonderful time to sort of tap into the expertise that we have with Isotrop.
Dan? David, this is Chris Garrity.
Hi, Chris.
Hi. I have a couple of questions, if I may. So you referenced the fact that technology has moved so quickly over the last number of years that obviously from three gig to four gig to probably five gig at one. And, um. So with that. Given that, the tower, as I understand, is a protracted 20-year rental. Is that, is that accurate?
That's, that's typical, yes.
Okay. The small cell network nodes, are they interchangeable? Or, uh, I guess what I'm getting at is if technology moves quickly enough over the next number of years. Anticipating that, it seems silly to me to leave a tower up there for the next 15 years. If indeed you have the flexibility of this node system that can be changed out and swapped out for newer stuff. Is that an accurate thought process?
Uh, yeah, yes, um, the. Let me go a little bit into the, the just differences between, um, a distributed network, whether it's small cells or. DAS and a tower. A tower becomes more or less permanent infrastructure. I have not seen towers come down. I have seen towers on major like interstates where the antennas were at the top. 15 years ago and now they're about halfway up because they were too high. As, uh, the network developed and they needed to lower the antennas to keep them from interfering with new nearby cell sites. So, um. There, there are situations where tower height is. Determined to be unnecessary and then to reduce the heights, but I haven't seen. Any great movement towards towers going away once they're built. The thing about distributing, the distributed antenna systems, actually even more so the, the small cells is. Wireless companies have the right to put a small cell on a utility pole. Of course, it has to meet the, the structural and safety standards and that sort of thing. But they have the right to do that as if they were utilities. Which means they don't have to pay rent to be on those poles. They have to just pay the pole attachment fee, which comes out to like 30 bucks a year. For pole maintenance. And it's, it's really cheap rent, basically. So there are. That is a, one of the benefits of the, the small cell technology. Distributed antenna systems. Do the same thing, but they charge rent to the carriers because they try to make space for all the carriers. So one of the benefits of a distributed antenna system is that. You don't see three poles in a row with antennas on. It'll be one pole with a common antenna. On, on the street. And that, that approach to the technology is, as, as you're suggesting, it's very adaptable. One company might want to put another node down in a hollow that another company is reaching okay from some other locations. They can, they can fine tune the positioning of their, their nodes.
Well, that's, that's helpful. Thank you. It, it really fits into the model that, that I've been thinking about, which is. Expanding beyond. Beyond just trying to service slowly over time, one section of town, the next section of town, next section of town. It seems to me that this, this small cell network. Program could be something we could roll out all across town. And achieve really what would be, I think, not only our goal, but probably in alliance with, with the Siting Council, which was to cover everybody.
And it really is a more, it's more customized and more appropriate to the, to our geography, you know, where. The geography is so varied that. The, you know, just the thought of how many cell towers that would have to go up in order to. Get coverage in all the valleys and peaks and. This just seems a very obvious. Solution for our town and our geography.
If I may, um, I represented, uh, or have represented a number of towns on the other side of the border in New York. And in New York, they've been rolling out these, um, small cell systems in places like Wesley Hills, New Hempstead. Poughkeepsie, you know, a number of places. I mean, Poughkeepsie's a city, but, but some of the smaller villages have been rolling this out to get. Coverage that you're, that you were just referring to for the entire community. And they, they'll roll out, you know, 24 nodes or 36 nodes and, and cover a village and then move on to the next one. And so it's very, very possible and the carriers in New York do that because that's something that's being encouraged there. In Connecticut, we haven't as a state encouraged this kind of system. And so they tend to resist it because I think for cost reasons. And perhaps, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure what all of their internal reasons are, but it's very possible.
Speaking. If I can just add to that real quick. This, this kind of gets also into the, the economics and the dynamics of, of this. Companies like Homeland are, are site developers who, uh, earn revenue from their long-term. Lease contracts with their tenants, the wireless companies. So they don't really have an interest in a distributed approach. The benefit to an AT&amp;T in a situation like this one is that AT&amp;T is not spending much money. Making this happen. Homeland is, is taking the risk. So.
That's correct.
That's one of the benefits that a wireless company gets by having a third-party developer. Come into town and, and push for a site on a property that they already control. And, and so. This is just another factor in the difficulty of convincing. Wireless companies to, to use a different approach in a particular geographic area. I've worked with a number of clients over the years who have tried to get distributed antenna systems going in various locations with varying success. One of the challenges is that. You have to have the support of the. One of the challenges is that you have to have the support of the regulators and you have to stay the course because they'll wait a few years and come back and try again. But if there is a clear message that's just repeated, that, you know, this area is not an area where you're going to get towers, you're going to need to come up with another way, the carriers will catch on to that over time and deal with it. But one of the other things we, I have tried with a couple of clients is to actually develop a distributed antenna system and make it available to the carriers. And again, that's a difficulty because carriers don't want to talk to you because they want to keep their options open. And as far as distributed antenna system companies are concerned, they're very cautious about not offending their, their tenants, their customers. So they will not go out and propose a distributed antenna system unless they already have a customer interested in doing it. So there's a chicken and egg problem with getting something, either a DAS or a carrier willing to do small cells going in a place like Kent.
So, David, the, the concept, whereas where I was going is a flexible, expandable, and comprehensive program, if the town designed one, say, under, under the auspices or the guidance of someone like you, as you planned, might not be really a, attempting or persuasive argument to the Siding Council because they bend more towards the carriers than they do their constituents in the state?
Well, I think Keith has more of a sense of the council than I do, but my general impression, when I, when I come back to Connecticut, is, is that it is strongly in favor of the carriers because it's the same carriers who appear before the same council every time, which is unlike surrounding states where local home rule takes precedence and, and it's, it's local zoning that negotiates with the carriers for the best outcome.
That is a significant difference because it is, it's done by municipality. The municipalities have a lot more influence over the process as opposed to the Siding Council, which was designed to install utility systems with a certain sense of efficiency.
An economic question, if I may. The, the small cell network versus the tower in terms of cost, David, you talked about two miles versus four miles, 148 people or residences versus 178. What are the economics on that? Can I, do I have the third, do, do I have the ability to get those 30 people who are not going to benefit from the tower, but might from the small cell network? Can I get like a per-cost number on that?
Yeah, it's always tough to get into costs because when you're looking at costs, you also have to look at benefit. And that's a black hole as far as the carriers are concerned. They don't release their analysis as to how many, you know, dollars per acre, per megabyte of, or megahertz of spectrum, you know, how, how that all works. So it's difficult to do a cost comparison that's meaningful. I think the, what we have are some slight differences that, with the tower, you have a third-party company that, one company has invested in the property, another company will invest in the construction and development of the tower. And then they will derive monthly revenue if, from the operating budget of each carrier that joins the tower. And so it's a long-term, basically, it's a real estate deal. Towers are vertical real estate. The other approach is that the carrier is taking on putting in small cells and, like I said, there's no rent. But on the other hand, you have to connect commercial data services to each one of these devices to bring that connection back to the cloud where they manage their networks. So there is some expense there. It, it's more devices to manage in, you know, spread out rather than in a single cell site. But I personally, I just don't see how the cost of seven small cells is materially different than the cost of, of being a tenant on a cell site.
Okay.
And just, just to, just to add to that for a minute, the, the rule of thumb is usually the first tenant on the tower usually covers, for the most part, the operating and the costs of the tower. When you get to a second tenant or third tenant, you start to derive revenue and income for it. So usually it's the, the first one in covers the costs and then you start to make money after the second one. And, and that's how they base the valuation of these towers when they sell them or they, they will encumber them through long-term debt. You know, if you look at someone like a Crown Castle or an American Tower, once they have a, they'll either acquire a tower or they'll borrow against that tower at very favorable rates, especially since, and most of these towers have 30 to 40-year leases on them from the tenant perspective. And, and from the lease perspective, I think in one of the letters that was filed, as part of the filing yesterday, Insight Wireless disclosed that they would be buying this tower from Homeland as part of their, as part of their development agreement, which they, they referenced, but they would not provide under confidentiality requirements between the two companies or two entities. But they did disclose that they would be buying this tower from them once construction's complete. And then, and that's normal course. There's been a couple of other projects where it's been transferred over and the certificate has been granted over to Insight and then Insight adds that to their overall portfolio. Ownership portfolio, I should say.
Yeah, got that. That makes sense. One last question I have is, you referenced that their application is to cover Route 341. Is there opportunity for them to pivot and say, no, we're actually looking to cover whatever they're looking to cover, the south, the southern part or this special, special area?
Well, they, they actually have argued, if you look at their supplemental filing, they're arguing that, well, we're, we're not just looking to do that. We're looking for a general footprint and to eventually connect to the greater network. And they bring up FirstNet, their emergency services, network. So they, they come up with other reasons, but ultimately, it was, they revealed in their application that they were seeking to cover the area along Route 341. And that typically is how they've been covering the entire state of Connecticut is they cover travel routes and the neighborhoods around them. Or if there's a particularly dense neighborhood, but they, they try to cover the travel routes first because that's where they get the drop calls. I mean, people who are station, stationary either have calls that are going through or they, you know, or they don't have coverage at all. Whereas people who are traveling, they have coverage and then they lose it. That's when they get angry.
So they could, in theory, pivot during the testimony on Thursday?
Um, yes. And I expect them to do a lot of pivoting because we've called them on a lot of their, their assumptions. And they're, and they're coming back very aggressively. I mean, they're attacking, you know, David's credibility and, and his abilities, the assumptions that he made in putting together the alternative tech. But we, we already, this morning, we're talking about how we would cover those, the responses to that through cross-examination. So, yeah, we, we expect them to fight back.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, although I will say, the fact that they're going to, you know, fight, the, the language they used in their, in their supplemental filing was fairly aggressive. And it tells me we touched a nerve because normally they say the same kinds of arguments, but the, the language they were using seemed to indicate that we came a little close to the mark because they said things like, we don't even think it's worthwhile cross-examining Isotrop because there's no foundation for their testimony. We would object to even having their coverage map submitted into evidence. I mean, first of all, those are, those are legally unsustainable arguments. But number two, that's so aggressive that they're basically saying, we're threatened by that information because we don't even want it to come into the record. And I've never seen them do that before.
Hey Keith, did you mention, I'm sorry, I've been listening to something else. Did you mention the thing about T-Mobile?
Um, I hadn't actually. That just came in only within the last hour, that T-Mobile filed, the Siding Council asks routinely in these applications for the other carriers to see if they're interested because obviously if there are other carriers, that means they have to keep open other slots. And T-Mobile has merged with Sprint. So T-Mobile slash Sprint said, we have no interest now or in the foreseeable future of locating on this tower. That means they don't need to reserve a slot for them. And Verizon did not respond to the request, which is not entirely unusual. Not all the carriers usually respond. T-Mobile does. Sprint never used to, but of course they're part of T-Mobile now. So this is actually good news because they, the height of their tower, the 150, 456 feet, is absolutely dependent on a 10-foot slot for T-Mobile Sprint.
So speak, on that, on that note, Keith, the slots presently are taken by AT&amp;T as number one. Right? Okay. So that's, they, they've covered their costs. So who else is on the slots? Are the emergency services still on the slot? And that would be a free ride anyway?
Yeah, that's, that's not a revenue generating thing. And that actually doesn't formulate part of the authority of the Siding Council. These, the Siding Council does not control the location of emergency services communications. So that's just a bonus. What they do is they use that as an excuse to say, hey, look, we're providing the town with emergency services communications, which they might not have. And that's a way to persuade the council to say yes, as opposed to, you know, just take it on the numbers. But that's just a side issue. So there's no other carrier that's, that's interested at the moment.
Okay, so they have one?
Yes.
On a 10-slot unit?
Uh, no, it, it's actually, they, they keep three slots open for carriers. It's 10 feet of tower separation between the panel antennas that they have.
I'm, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. So there are three slots. And what is your experience in terms of someone like T-Mobile saying, no, I never have it. And then they join next week?
Um, they, if they had any plans whatsoever of, of moving into this territory, they wouldn't have sent in the letter. They, they would have just stayed silent. Can they change their mind? Absolutely.
Okay. Yep, I got you. And so who are the other players? Who else comes in?
Verizon's the
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Keith.
Verizon's the other one. And then there's MetroPCS, but I, I
T-Mobile acquired MetroPCS several years ago. Yeah.
Okay, so.
The, the only other one, the only other one, and I apologize because I can't see who's speaking or not, but would be Dish. Dish Network obtained some extra frequencies and has been gearing up for establishing a network, but they have not, you know, that's still in the early infancy of, of its work and its build-out and all that good stuff. So not, not, and who knows when they would focus on a rural area like Kent. Typically, when you roll, when you roll, when you roll out a new network, you hit all of the, you know, you start with the quote unquote NFL cities first and you work from there usually so that you can, and that gets to megahertz per pop costs, et cetera. So you, you try to get as many population under, under your, where you're, where you're licensed to operate. So that's the only one I see.
I agree.
Sort of how, just from a, from a rental perspective, how does this, how does this make sense for Homeland or the builder?
Well, at a minimum, at a minimum, it's another tower in a portfolio that goes up into Insight's portfolio. I don't know what the number is. You could see it on their website of how many they have. And then when they, if they ever, you know, one, they, they can borrow against it, like I mentioned, or when they, they, they'll sell them as a, as, you know, 10, 20, 30 towers at a time.
Yeah, I got it.
And so you, you take, you take the ones with three and you take the ones with one and they all average out.
Yep, I got it.
To a multiple of, a multiple of X, which can be 10X to, to 20X.
Whatever the range is. Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. And does the Siding Council look at that? Are they just purely looking on the coverage and a, looking on, I mean, I'm sure they don't care about the business plan. Why would they? I would imagine they are really just looking at, does this cover? Is that accurate?
I think that, that's about accurate. Yeah. I mean, they, they want to make sure that the tower is necessary based on what the FCC licensed carrier is telling them through their testimony about a need, you know, a public need for coverage in an area. So.
Yeah, they, the Siding Council has two factors they're supposed to consider in these, like in these proceedings. One is public need versus environmental compatibility. And, and that's the balancing test.
Exactly. Yep.
It is my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that there were a few slots open still on the Siding Council, that it is not a full board. Is it, is that accurate?
Yes. In fact, there's no chairman and there were two slots open for environmentalists. And one of those has been filled. But so they're down one of their environmental voices and they're down on a, on a solid, consistent leadership basis, which has changed the, the, let's say, the personality of the council a little bit. But they've also retrenched a little bit because of that.
Thank you. So Gene, what, what's, what's the, what's, what's the plan of action from us at this point?
So the other piece that we need to discuss, and this is going to be, I believe, Dan and Dan, is the discussion and action on the testimony that has been drafted and submitted to the Siding Council from me for the hearing next Thursday.
Okay.
That, that's right, Gene. Just so everyone knows, yesterday, Dan and I filed Gene's prefiled testimony, which is basically just her affidavit attaching a letter that Dan and I helped her write and she signed yesterday, that summarizes the concerns and the comments of the town. And I know that she sent to Chris and Ed a copy of that letter either last night or this morning. And the purpose of today, today's action item would be to have the board consider and take action upon a resolution essentially ratifying what Gene says in her testimony so that when she gets up before the council next Thursday, we will ask her, do you have any clarification to your testimony? And she'll say, yes, the board has collectively met on Friday, this Friday, and, and voted to approve and adopt the comments as the comments of the board.
Okay, thank you.
So in order to move that part of the meeting along, I'll make a motion to approve and endorse the prefiled testimony that was submitted to the Siding Council July 16th.
I'll second that.
Thanks. So I'm going to sort of hand this off to Dan and Dan. I know, Dan, you're on the phone, so you have a little bit of limitation. But as far as the, the background and how we got to the language.
May I interrupt for a sec? Do we, not, just in the sake of saving people time, do, do we still need David, the consultant?
It's up to, it's up to David.
Okay, I just want to, I don't
And David, thank you so much for this. It was hugely, hugely helpful in getting a true visual
My pleasure. Thank you. I have
I have a, I have a three o'clock call, but if there might be more questions, I'm happy to hang on and you can continue to stare, stare at my screen or I can give it back to you.
Perfect, thank you, David.
So, so, um, I can give a little bit of a background on the letter if that's what you were looking for, Jean?
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, so I, I think that the letter and the, and the prefiled testimony, you know, somewhat speaks for itself in that it really just gives a, a summary back to the Siting Council about the history of, starting in, you know, generally with the, uh, with the, with the hearing, the public hearing in December of two thousand and nineteen, the presentation that was provided by the applicant at that time. There was one minor kind of change from them at that point. They had, uh, one, one of the sites had a, a higher tower. We clarified that, you know, meaning that in the letter, we recognized that in their application, both sites had the same, same antenna, um, that they, that they proposed. And then, you know, prior to and during the, the presentation in that timeframe, there was, um, you know, a dozen or so letters from various, uh, citizens of Kent and also organizations and, uh, even Kent's, uh, Conservation Commission and the Planning and Zoning had provided letters in opposition to the, uh, the tower for, for those reasons that they basically set forth in their letters. And we, uh, just kind of highlighted that a little bit in the letter. Uh, also, you know, to, to balance from the town's perspective, there was a letter in favor of from the Kent Volunteer Fires Department, and that was also included. And so to give the, the Siting Council a little bit of understanding of what occurred at the town, uh, because they weren't there. And, um, so they, you know, in, in relation to all of that, we submitted all of the different letters and, um, comments and suggestions. And then we shifted to the second part of the letter, which was, um, more of the town, you know, in order to, you know, to what Keith said, basically, is to balance that aesthetic, you know, view, uh, and what's so paramount to the town. But also taking into consideration and understanding that coverage would be important to, to the area, you know, if, as long as it's tightly, you know, covering the area that needs to be covered. And so with that, that the, the, the best way to do that would be by, you know, a half a dozen or so small cells now. And then kind of clarifying that, you know, to David's point about, you know, what, what are we talking about when we talk about a small cell? And, and that's fine. And David can discuss more of that because we're relying upon the experts to do that interpretation from a small cell. And so, uh, now the only, a little bit of difference is that, um, David, I believe, added one or, one or two more small cells in his analysis that he was presenting today and what was filed than before. But again, it really get, kind of gives you an idea that by adding one or two small cells, you can increase the coverage and get it more robust to where you need to have it to go. So with that, uh, there was also a, a discussion and a point or two about, you know, if, um, if that was not the way the commission, uh, decided that perhaps an eighty-foot-tall tower would work as the alternative, although not preferred, but least likely. But, you know, it could, it could also replicate some coverage. But again, not even give you the full four miles, as David had pointed out in his, uh, in his testimony. And then lastly, uh, I know Keith started this discussion in mentioning a, a, a decision that was mentioned, I think, uh, Branford. There's a couple of other deci- decisions that the, that the Siting Council has come down in. And I'll just, just briefly talk about them. One in Easton and one in Brookfield, uh, Connecticut. And, and really what the distinguishing factors there were in both of those decisions, there was a discussion or, or at least a reference to small cells and why those small cells would not work for those locations. Typically, you know, there's an acknowledgement by, in the, in the, in the decisions, that small cell is a technology that we all can agree on, that can provide the coverage and the, and the, and the service, I should say. But what was different in those two locations, for the most part, was they weren't sure how many small cells would be needed for covering a much broader coverage footprint than was here. Uh, where, where here, we have an idea, five, six, seven, you know, under a dozen, for sure. And, oh, you know, that would be overkill for more than, you know, even, even what David has looked at from that nature, looking at it a conservative approach. And so, and then the second issue was pointed out in the Brookfield decision that, um, another criteria or another reason that they thought small cells would not work was because of the dense population in the homes in the area that they were, there, that was designated for the coverage. Again, not an issue in Kent or in this location, compare, comparing the two side by side. So for all of those reasons, the conclusion by the town of Kent and the board in Jean's letter is that small cells is the preference over the two towers. And that's, it was fairly succinct, uh, and to the point. And it leverages and is based upon the expert testimony that will come in. It will also be based on what, what has, uh, been, been, uh, the, the various organizations and the various commissions have told the board about the, the issues with this, with the tower. So that, that's about it from what we, what was put together.
I think bringing in the, the information from those two Siting Council decisions and that it, what was used against, not against, but not in favor of the small cell solution in Brookfield and Easton actually is, supports the use of a small cell system in Kent. And it's their own word, so I think it's, I think that's robust to add in that.
I'm being, I being more of a marketing person, uh, and we have constituents from which we are speaking for and, and speaking to, I, if, if we're in agreement, uh, on the border selection side, it makes sense to me, uh, to be able to, uh, promulgate these two differentiating maps, if you will. And to my point, really just sending a, a, a letter out to everybody, but specifically the neighborhoods that would have coverage that might not have coverage. These are all public record, are they? Or are they still just, that is what David put up, David's and, and this group's?
Versions of these are in the, uh, in our report.
In the filings, okay, great, thank you.
So Ed and Chris, as far as the letter that was submitted, do you have any, um, questions or tweaks or anything? We, Dan and Dan and I worked to make it pretty succinct and not, you know, go on because there's experts that are gonna provide their testimony. And this was really to provide testimony that has to do with the people, you know, that, that we serve in the town.
I didn't have a problem, is it, uh, no, I didn't have a problem with it.
Ed, any, um, feedback? You're on mute.
My only problem, as you mentioned, as president of the fire department and ambulance chief. So you're referencing, kind of made it look like the fire department was backing your letter also.
I didn't get that.
No, I'm sure you didn't, but I, I did, or it could be.
Yeah, well,
Other people.
And that was specifically added in there?
Sure it was that, you know, and I don't agree with that being in there as far
No, let me finish. It was specifically added in there for transparency so that, um, so that the, it was in my testimony, my experience, that, understanding the need and the, the, um, the being familiar with the issues of, of communications.
Well, it's in anyway.
But?
It's in already anyway, so it doesn't matter what I think now, so.
It's of record, Ed, she was.
That's what I'm saying.
So, but my point, my point simply is, that's her history. And that, that leads her to her experience. She may not have been a voting, she may not have agreed or even voted in favor, but I'm just saying.
You asked me my opinion, so that's all, that's why I gave it, that's all.
Yep. And is there anything else?
No.
Okay. So are we, um, we have a motion to, um...
Yeah, the only thing, Jean, I, I, I didn't read in this and maybe, and then maybe it doesn't even matter, but the whole concept that, of the bent that I've been going on is I think this is something we can try to use, you know, the small cell node network elsewhere in town. I mean, I think that's really, ultimately, our goal is to, while our goal is to, uh, you know, protect the environment or, or the, the visibility of the ridge line. I think we, our, our greater obligation is to everyone in town. And I would hope, rather than, and this has been my, my, my concern, hope that rather than have this fight again in three years up on Skiff Mountain, that we could have leaned on a newer or a different, uh, network system that might, might help everybody in town. And, and, and appeal to the Siting Council on that. That, that really, uh, in my opinion, uh, we should be trying to help the fire department. Uh, we should be trying to help, uh, you know, emergency services, I should say. And we're also trying to get everybody in town with the coverage, as is the same goal for the Siting Council. We're just viewing it from a municipality in a, a long-term, uh, less mountain-hopping, uh, process that this, uh, that this network helps us with.
Right, that's more specific to our, our town versus a broad, broad, broad
Yeah, and
Dan and, Dan and I can work as, we worked through the weekend and in the early part of next week on prepping for the oral, my oral testimony, we can, you know, work that piece in.
Okay, I, I, I
That make sense?
That is, that is the main priority for me.
That's, that makes sense.
Any other questions or Dan, Dan, anybody, um, any gaps we need to fill in?
Not for me.
Nope, I'm all set.
So we'll move to vote on the motion to approve and endorse the prefiled testimony submitted on July sixteenth. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your hand.
Chris Garrity, aye. I'm on, am I on video? Let me get on video. There we go.
Thank you. Those opposed?
I'll be abstaining.
You're abstaining, okay. Thank you. And that is it for our agenda. I appreciate everybody's, um, coming in on Friday afternoon. Hope everybody stays cool over the weekend and, um, any questions? Everybody knows, I think we're gonna find each other.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.